Now then, I'll call the meeting of the Planning Commission for August the 12th, 5:30. First of all, we have a call to order.
Yes, and roll call.
Yes.
Cheryl Padgett.
Here.
Joe Chapel.
Yes.
Don McBride.
Here.
And Chris Bryant is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Okay. Are there any public comments at this time? And there is a paper outside the door that you're supposed to sign up for.
Yeah, actually, there wasn't.
It's over there on the table.
Oh, it's on the table?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But with the commission, we just usually let them come up.
Oh.
With the county, yeah, we don't make them sign in.
You're not as formal?
No, we're not as formal. However, we could tell them that, yeah, if they're going to talk on the agenda item, it's coming up, so they don't have to.
Okay. I'm assuming that everyone here is going to be talking on the item that's on the agenda for today? Okay.
I guess you can just read the item number.
Well, are we going to have any public comments?
After you read it.
After it. Okay. Number two, public comments. Oh, you want to go, we're going to, excuse me, guys, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
No, no, I apologize.
He's steered me wrong.
I'm misleading her.
Okay, number four, number three, approval of the previous minutes from June 13, 2019, and the August 8, 2019, meeting, Dan.
Yeah, well, I'll ask the commission to just go ahead and table this, because with Chris Bryant being gone, we don't have enough to approve due to absence of previous meetings and whatnot, so we'll just table both of those till the next meeting.
Do I need a motion on that? Okay, both of those are tabled, then. Number four, PC application number 19-006, discussion and possible action on a request to rezone 12 acres of property located in the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 6 Township 15 North Range 2 West, south of Lakewood Drive, northwest of Chris Madsen Road, from R1, which is single-family residential, to R5, which is planned unit development for a 12-unit bed and breakfast and a group reception sitter not to exceed events of 60 people. Staff, do you have a report on that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Most, just like the audience, this is now a, back in front of us, it was tabled at the August 8 meeting. The primary reason it was tabled at the August 8 meeting is there was some concern over the ownership or the ability of the current owners to move forward with this specific application. After that meeting, the city attorney, as well as myself, did get documentation from the owner and other resources and that, and the city has determined that the owner does have the authority to move forward with the rezone action. There may be concern or issue with the sale of the property, but that really isn't a, if you want to say, concern for us, the biggest issue for us or the city is that the person who is making the application or signing the application as the owner has the authority to request the rezone, which they do. So the process can go forward as proposed through the process. So anyway, if you have questions about that, I can answer that. But then, just to go over the request again, so it's clear to the public, as well as the commission, the current request is for a plan development which would approve a site plan or a development plan that would limit the property to 12 of the bed and breakfast units and also not to, or have events not to exceed 60 people, and that would be for the entire 12 acres. If the, if the rezone was approved, even if there was a sale of the property or anything down the road in the property, this development plan will be tied to that property. If they would want to make any changes, increase the number of units, or have events with more people, whatever the case may be, they would have to come through the exact process they're going through now, which would be to the Planning Commission for a recommendation and the City Council for a final approval. And I know that originally, this item was looked, was going to go as an R2 in that, which was just multifamily. Again, that's not the case. This does have limitations based on the development plan that is been presented or as part of the application. Also, I'll just note that the comprehensive plan does designate this as concre, or conservation development. The zoning ordinance nor the comp plan really has a lot of detail on how that should develop. One thing it does say is that it generally should be less than two units per acre, which this particular application with 12 acres would be within that density, if you want to say limitations or around that density. So for the most part, it would be consistent with the comp plan. And again, I just want to, oh, and then I should say that we did receive four written letters of protest. There's, I think, probably a couple of those, maybe if not all of them are here tonight that may speak, but we did receive four letters of protest that were included in your packet. So with that, I'll leave it back to the commission. If you have any questions, if not at that point, then I'd just ask the chair to go ahead and open it up for the public to comment.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, we are opening this up for public comment at this time. Who would like to go first? Okay, Lynn.
Well, I'm the fly in the ointment that asked to have it tabled last time. I'm going to ask one more time to have it tabled, and the only reason is that I thought we had a gentleman's agreement with the personal representative's attorney, that this was, we were going to wait on this. I got a letter Monday morning saying now she's decided to go ahead and present the request. So Monday afternoon, I filed a motion for injunctive relief in this court case. It's not going to be heard until September 24th. So I would ask that, and Dan is exactly right, there is nothing in the probate court that prohibits her from requesting rezoning of property owned by the estate. However, she still can't sell the property, which this is all hinging on, without permission from the court. So we've asked for injunctive relief because a one-half beneficiary of this estate is adamantly opposed to this. And I'm not going to try the merits of that case or what's going on, I'm just telling you that that will be heard in District Court September 24th. And if, I'm going to reserve the rest of my comments, I would like one more chance to come up if the commission is not going to table this until your next meeting. I do have substantive arguments that I would like to present as well, but I'd ask you to do that first, based on that information.
For my own edification, please.
You go right ahead.
Say it were allowed to be rezoned, and we carried on with that, and then the property was not sold. I'm understanding that we would, the person that owns it would have to go back through the process of changing it back to R1.
Yes. I'm sure they would.
Yeah, no, they would, because the same thing, you know, if it goes through the process, and again, I'll remind the commission that you're a recommendation body, so regardless of what happens tonight, it still goes to the City Council for, City Council for their final decision. But that is correct, if it goes through the process, and then through the court side or the civil side, if it is found that the current owner cannot sell the property or that, it would not affect the rezone, per se, because that would still be in effect. However, the owner may have a property in which they, or they have a specific development plan on, which then they may not be able to sell as they would like, which then, again, they could go through the exact same process to basically reverse it.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
And the only thing I'll add to the, Mr. Billado, and what he was saying is, ultimately, it's up to the commission. I can tell you that I've talked with the city attorney, he could not be here tonight because he has another council meeting in another community, but even if an injunction has been filed, there's been nothing presented that is with any certainty or absolute saying this person doesn't have the ability to move forward, and there may be issues with the sale, as was indicated in that. But right now, there does not seem to be anything that would prevent the Planning Commission from having this application move forward. Now, there could be other stuff in the coming weeks that, before it goes to council, that come, it could come up from the court or otherwise, that could possibly stop it, but at this point, if you do move forward, I don't believe that there's any, and even the city attorney, that there's any liability on the commission, the city, or that, to move it through its due process.
And I agree with everything Mr. Kasek just said. We don't have an order for an injunction, I've just filed the motion. It's not going to be heard till the 24th.
24th, right.
So.
Well, you might have another chance.
Okay, I will, I'm going to sit back down, but like I said, I would like to speak again if this isn't going to be tabled, and I don't know if you're going to discuss that.
All right.
I do have substantive arguments.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak, either for or against? Okay, thank you. Would you mind giving me your name and address?
My name is Joey Rosario, I live at 1902 Lakewood Drive, right across from the property. I built it in, a large home in 2001.
Okay.
My family has six acres, joined with my property, part of them are here tonight. I just want to make sure, you know, we built this home and thought of being out in the country and having country life and not having an area that could be, you know, bed and breakfast, or whatever, rezoning for all that, and it really bothers us, this came up, you know, when this came upon us, we were kind of shocked at it, that it was wanting to be rezoned. And I understand it's a problem with the property across the street with the brother and sister, and that's been going on for a long, long time, but our feeling is, our family's feeling is, we don't want this to happen. We want to keep that country life, you know, we're right on the edge of the city limits right there, and we, you know, we pay our taxes, we live out there, we take care of our property, we protect each other, and not, there's nothing wrong with the bread and breakfast, you know, but, or the zoning that y'all are wanting to do, but our feeling is that we'd like it to stay the way it is. So I just wanted to voice that, you know, being a homeowner there.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone else that has, hi, Abe. Okay, name?
This is Abe Gossempur, 6805 South Coltrane, joining this project.
Thank you.
I spoke last time in here, but I think I was not aware last time, originally, they were going to have this as a R1 to R2, and then I was not aware that it's really changed to the R5. So I've reviewed the R5 elements in here, there's nine elements, and I really don't see this project that complies with the R5. R5 requires that this area is proposed, but development shall be sufficient for the size of provided living space for a minimum of approximately 100 families. It didn't say 100 guests, it didn't say 100 hotel resident or whatever, it's a family. And beside that, first of all, as a realtor, I really appreciate this people business, and I think within the city, the Chamber of Commerce, Logan County, whoever, the economical development, or realtors, whoever, what we can do, we like to keep their business in Logan County. But unfortunately, this project does not really comply to that area. This is the, the plant, it's, the name is with it, the planned unit development. That mean you have an architect sitting up here, have the whole picture, what this place is going to look like, before you build it. All I've seen so far, just a picture that it could have come up probably Home and Garden Magazine. I haven't seen, I have not had no architect, no real engineer, no map to see what the whole plan is, and it does not, this 12 acres does not apply with this, and I'm confident that you all have read the R5 and are familiar with it, but I appreciate, this is just, this is completely a commercial business. This is just the 12 hotels with the convention centers, that you call it the event centers, Christmas, New Years, birthday parties, events, and the class reunion, family reunion. I mean, you're talking about, it's a lot of, kind of a noise and things, and right now, we call ourselves a country living, but this project, it's just, it's just commercial. This is, doesn't have nothing to do with the residential. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm opposing it, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Bob McMillan, I live at 1810 West Lakewood Drive. My wife and I, I retired four years ago, and we bought the property because we wanted to live out in the country with neighbors and have a nice, a country living type area where we knew everybody around us. And this wasn't what we anticipated, if we wanted to live next to a business, we would have bought a piece of property next to a business. And I know this is called residential, but at the end of the day, it's still a business because money is changing hands for the use of the property. And if this business is going to be successful, and as someone that's a capitalist and has an entrepreneurial spirit, I hope it is successful, but they need to have 60% occupancy. That means there's going to be 360 unique individuals coming into our neighborhood every year. And that, I'm not so much concerned about them from a safety point of view, although the traffic is going to be an issue, and the driveway is straight across the street from my property, but it's also going to allow an opportunity for us to not know who's coming into the neighborhood, opens the door for people that want to case the neighborhood to come in and look at it. I mean, right now, even the neighbors that we don't know, we know them to see them drive by our place. Now there'd be an opportunity for someone that wants to come in and case the area, to see who's there, to come and visit for a week and make their plans of how they're going to steal stuff from us. The traffic is going, like I said, 360 at a minimum, if this is going to be successful. Being successful is the best-case scenario. If this business were to go in and fail, it's still going to be R5, and someone probably is going to have the idea that they can do this business where this, where this group of people couldn't. The truth of the matter is, having been in business, I've looked at what they plan, I think if anybody's going to be successful, it's going to be them, but let's just say that it's not. What you're going to end up with is 12 cabins and a building out there in the woods that are going to be unoccupied. And that's going to be a situation where we can have transients, you know, shacking up there, meth labs, I mean, it's just a bad deal, this is not what we wanted to do when we retired to this location. And so my wife and I are against it, and that's what I wanted to say this evening.
I appreciate it, thank you very much. Next, yes, sir.
My name is Nelson Cordero, and I live, I'm his uncle, and I live about a couple acres north of him. The only, I'm not against, like I said, capitalism and the people doing business, I mean, this is the United States of America, military, I've fought for my country, I've done a lot, a lot of things. The only thing that I have a little bit of problem is that I don't think tonight, and if you guys can explain this to me, that the people that are trying to do this, where are they? Are they here? Am I missing somebody?
They're here.
Are they here?
Yeah.
So, who are they? Okay, are you, are you guys going to speak? Because I missed the last meeting, I'm sorry that I'm giving it in my bag, so I'm new at this, okay? But the only thing that I want to know is, the plans, what are you going to do, you know? But like I said, I'm not against business, I'm from New York, okay, how about that? And city, so I'm used to businesses, but one thing that I like to see, the thing about Guthrie, when I moved out there in 1986, and I'm going to go back a little bit, and I don't want to make this long, because I know we probably got to get out of here because of the weather, but the thing that I see is that every time that I try to put something in Guthrie, you know, of course, the permits and everything, and since it's city now, because when I bought that in 86, you know, there was, it wasn't city limits, and then I guess the city annexed it, and it was great, you know, no problem. You know, we got the trash, gas, everything, and it's beautiful, beautiful out there. But what I see is that if I want a better building, according to the city, I mean, there's some, you, the city is strict, I mean, this is not, hey, you can put some tin and stuff like that. What are they building? What is, you know, stucco, wood? I know you cannot build a metal house now, because I think that's what they, that's what the bylaws or something from the city is, you know, I don't know if I'm explaining myself right, but maybe you guys can shed a little bit of light, and you know, and see, I just want to know what they're doing. That's it, because all I see is that they're going to put 12 units and this and that, I agree with my neighbors, but I also want to see, what are they doing? If they would be willing, because I missed the last meeting, so I apologize, but I really thank you for your time, and thank you guys, okay?
Thank you very much.
If I can, real quick, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, just to let the audience know that, yeah, usually, we'll let the public speak, and then we'll give the applicant the opportunity to speak as well, because then it also helps them, because then they can answer some of the questions that the public brought up, so then, yeah, the applicant will have the opportunity once the public is done.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Pat Anglin, I live at 6603 West Drive. I have a couple of questions, and one is the sewage. I know that it's required that you have, you have to have a whole acre to have a septic system. Well, you're talking about 12 units plus a meeting house. Is that going to require a large septic, or are they planning a lagoon? A lagoon would not be a good idea, you're out there by the Guthrie Lake, you have all the rains like we had last spring, where is that water going to go? Into your Guthrie Lake. And another thing is the roads. After the rains, and since nobody's come out and fixed the roads, we have a road that's caving in around by the lake, and it needs to be widened if you're going to have all that traffic. That's the biggest concern I have.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can, real quick, the city won't allow lagoons on any development, so it will be a septic or tie-in to sewer, if available, in that, but it does go through the proper environmental permitting processes and that. And to kind of go back with what the gentleman said, is yes, there are certain criteria that are in through the development standards, design standards, and things like that that have to be met. Tonight, it's more about getting the, if you want to say, the land use and the zoning in place for them to allow to go through the building permitting process, just like anybody else would, you know, for their single-family home and that, so just to hopefully clarify that a little bit, but yeah, there won't be any open lagoons or anything like that. It'll be, like I said, done through the septic, or the proper environmental permits.
Is there anyone other, just from the public, that needs to speak again?
Say, I think.
Lynn, let him speak and then I'll, thank you.
David Stanford, 6721 Chris Madsen Road. My wife and I are opposed to the rezoning, and we sent one of the letters, a number of reasons, most of which have been addressed. A big one that, that came to me this afternoon was, if we had known this was going to be rezoned as something other than residential, we probably wouldn't have bought our property. And I think there's probably quite a few people here that, that would agree with that, so we're opposed.
Thank you. Lynn, I know you're going to speak, but you'll speak after, thank you.
Several of the things that I was going to bring up have already been brought up by these neighbors. But one of the things that I want to do is refer to the actual zoning ordinance, and right now, not only is this area already R1, it's bound by the north and the south by R1. And under the zoning ordinance, it says this is the most restrictive residential district. One of the purposes of that is these residential areas are intended to be defined and protected from encroachment of uses which are not appropriate to residential environment, and I think that's what these neighbors are concerned about. Three years ago, we had an outfit try to come into Guthrie, and they wanted to turn the publishing museum into 34 affordable senior apartments. And it was a great idea, it was the wrong building. Another outfit ended up doing it at the hospital, and that's worked out great, and I'm all for it. The plans that these people have for the bed and breakfast, the different units and all this, it may be a great idea, this is the wrong place for it. My wife and I live in downtown Guthrie, so we're in the central business district, and so we know if there's a football game, we're going to get a lot of noise coming in the windows. We know if there's a parade, we're going to get a lot of noise, if there are other activities going on downtown, we're going to get a lot of noise. It was that way when we signed up to live here. It wasn't that way for these people, when they signed up to live where they're living. And they feel like if this gets approved, that this commission is not following the guideline of protecting them from encroachment on the inappropriate uses. The second thing is, when you look, and I'm so sorry, I don't remember your name, he nailed it. This isn't even a large enough area to qualify for planned unit development. If you look at the minimum district area, 6.2, he quoted the bottom paragraph, I don't know if you caught that, it has to be sufficient size to provide living space for a minimum of approximately 100 families. You're not putting 100 families into this area. The other two restrictions on that is that it's to be of a large enough size to permit the development of a complete community or neighborhood having a range of dwelling types. Necessary local shopping facilities, off-street parking compounds, parks, playgrounds, reservation area therefore, reservation for education facilities. It's also, thirdly, it's to be bound by major thoroughfares and streets on all sides. This isn't. It's bound by residential areas on two sides. So you don't meet any of the four criteria that's set out in the planned unit development to even put a planned unit development on this 12 acres.
Thank you.
Are planned unit developments different in every community?
Yes, and I'll, I'll say, and again, if somebody wants to challenge that, that's fine, and if the commission doesn't want to take that determination, that's fine. The, basically, a zoning administrator determination, planning director determination was made that, yes, the black and white literal interpretation of the PD is meant for large communities that would come in. The basis, the general basis behind the planned unit development is to allow for properties to have specific development plans and have even potential conditions put upon them to develop. It is one of.
Do we have any, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but do we have any existing PUDs in Guthrie?
Yes, there are a number of them, and they're all on 6,000 square foot lots.
And they're not, they don't have 100 families living on them?
No, no, no.
And I know, I know of a couple of PUDs in Oklahoma City.
Yeah, and.
That are just commercial areas.
Yeah, it will be an area that will be looked at and revised to make it more appropriate for today's, if you want to say, time. It's a very archaic PD. If, if the commission does decide that, you know, you want to go by the letter of the law, the absolute black and white, and not have any, if you want to say, intent involved, then you're probably right, it's not the appropriate zoning district, but we also have other properties then that become an issue, because they're also zoned R5, and their ability to develop in that are compromised.
And I do know that where, where, where a PUD like this would help, I know several years ago, and you all may not, just for everybody's edification, you know where the storage unit is that's just north of the farm and tractor place?
Yes.
Out on Interstate? Years ago, they, the owner came and wanted to get it changed to be a, they got the, they got the, you know, the zoning changed for, I can't even remember what it was. It was something like, to help, like a treatment center or some such thing, and.
Yeah, it was treatment.
Then they got it changed, you know, and I wasn't, of course, this was before I was on the planning commission, they got it changed, and it never happened. And then the storage unit came in and used the new zone. The good thing about a PUD, though, is that the, even, even if this doesn't go forward, it's my understanding that a PUD locks that particular business in, and it can't be, if that doesn't happen, that's the only thing that can happen there.
Yeah, that's correct.
With the PUD. So it can protect, it can be used to the good, I guess, is what I'm saying.
And that was, I think, the intent with this, too, is for the good, but generally, most communities usually have a minimum of one acre in order for a PD to be, you know, I, I can't tell you the number of PUDs that I've processed in my career and that, but like I said, if that's a point of contention or wants to be challenged, there's also a board of adjustment that can challenge that determination on whether it is appropriate or not.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak, other than the person that's applying? If you would like to speak.
You guys have so many concerns, I don't know.
Excuse me.
Alicia Hin, 10125 Mills Paw Way.
Okay.
I hope I remember everything to be able to address it all. Majority of it, we are also concerned with, obviously, there you're seeing some images, I have one extra. I have one extra because I know.
We already had, we, I don't know that Don.
He wasn't here last time. So I do have an extra one, but I might need it to read from.
Don hasn't seen them.
You guys are very concerned with the use of the property and it being commercial, and I know it's not really relevant, the 10 acres next to it, but we're hoping to put our home there. So essentially, we'll be the closest neighbors. We do know that any noise ordinances that are in place, I mean, anything that applies to anyone else, we know we will be going by the same. We want to raise a family there. We want, I mean, we're not trying to destroy the land and commercialize it. We want a farm, we want to keep the land as natural as possible. We want to clean it up, obviously, so people can walk around and enjoy it. Everyone kind of says maybe it's a good idea, but elsewhere, and the whole point is to get out of the city and to have somewhere, it's close enough to still water whenever people's families need to come for Mom's Day or Dad's Day. People from Oklahoma City, people from Norman, they're more interested in Guthrie than any other of the surrounding areas, and it's only going to help the economy. We've obviously done a little bit of research on septic systems and all of that, and there's certain distances for different septics. We have to abide by all of those codes, and we plan on it. And the environment, it's super important to us, and we, we don't want to destroy anything. And I know that's your main concern. In regards to the R2 versus R5, I think we thought this was the safest bet for everyone with the concerns with R2. This is the only thing that can happen there. And in my opinion, what, what's allowed for that land for future use, being two homes per acre, if you include the 10 acres that we then wouldn't be buying, I mean, you're looking at 40 homes, essentially, possibly in the future there, versus the 12 cabins and our home. So it would be even more populated. So we kind of just thought this was the better route. But we're, we are not looking to destroy anything that you guys have created. We want to be a part of the community here. We want to keep it natural. We, we're not trying to do anything crazy to your community by any means. The event center is, I think, of quite a bit of controversy. We're talking like an indoor/outdoor patio space, nothing huge by any means, just somewhere that's covered and protected from the weather. If it's raining, if people want to grill, maybe, nothing expansive or elaborate.
Excuse me, is it going to be an enclosed facility, or is it just going to be a?
We're thinking partially.
Do you have your, do you have your plans for him?
Yeah, and I'm not, I mean, this is, it'll be all repetitive to them, but there's some pictures behind there too. I've never seen one. We've hired an architect. Obviously, with all of this going on, we've kind of halted a lot of the planning. So we're not spending money on something that's maybe not going to go forward. So indoor/outdoor, we'd like for it to be open. I'm, I'm not 100% sure if it'll be completely enclosed. But we have looked at the building codes, and I think no more than 60% can be a metal building. So, I mean, we're, we really want to do this right. This is how I want to retire and raise my family, and we want it to be nice. I mean, we are not, we're not trying to mess anything up for you guys, so. I think I answered most things. The roads, I mean, there are codes and fire and all of that, and we have to abide by that and make sure that everyone's safe, including you guys, and safety's a concern for us. I mean, having those people in and out near our home and our property, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that everyone's safe. I mean, that's my and my family's livelihood as well. So I believe.
Thank you.
I answered everything.
Oh. I don't.
Thank you.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Okay, has everyone voiced their opinion at this time? All right. Any questions or discussion from the council? I mean, the commission?
My thought, I think you guys have a beautiful idea. But as you can tell, it's sort of, you've run into a wall. I don't know how much further out of town you'd have to go, but in, but, and I think it's probably the, the type of thing that, that if it came in, it probably wouldn't live up to the terrible expectations that the residents have. I know that we had a similar incident recently where a bed and breakfast went in on Cleveland, and we had all the same arguments. Now, this is a different animal. This isn't one house being rented as, but anyway, when I got on here, I always felt like, you know, that I would, I wouldn't do to anybody what I wouldn't do to my own mother. So I make a motion to deny.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we deny this request to change the zoning from R1 to R5. So.
And roll call vote, Cheryl Paget?
Let's clarify first. We're, we're voting to deny.
This would be a recommendation for denial. And again, just, just so everybody understands, again, the planning commission is a recommendation body. This will be going to the city council regardless of the planning commission decision. And even if the planning commission has a recommendation of denial, the city council could still approve it, or they could take the recommendation of this, of the planning commission. So again, this is simply a recommendation. It obviously still will hold weight with the city council, but again, there is one more step for the final determination or decision on.
They don't always listen to us.
Right. Thanks for clarifying that. So you've asked me, my vote is to deny.
Okay, so that's a yes vote on the motion.
Yes.
Okay. Joe Chapel?
Yes.
Don McBride?
Yes.
Okay, so it's 3-0, recommendation of denial. And, and also just for kind of the transparency aspect in that, because I don't believe by our codes that we have to notify the property owners, this will be going to the October 1st city council meeting. If there's something in the civil process that comes up, obviously, just check the agenda for that night or when it's there. If it's on there, then you'll obviously notice, show up. If something else comes about that may stall it or whatever, obviously, if it's not on the agenda, that means that happens. But again, it will be going to the October 1st city council meeting.
I wish you guys could find something very close to Guthrie with neighbors that don't know you're there.
Right. That's good. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Staff comments?
Yeah, I don't have any tonight.
Okay.
No.
Commission comments?
No.
No?